The time is 6:38 PM. I will now call the August 5, 2024, meeting of the Common Council of the City of Lawrence to order. Please stand for enjoining the Pledge of Allegiance and prayer.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Everyone, please bow. Dear Father, we come to you today with humble hearts. We ask that you continue to keep your hand of protection over our city. We ask that you continue to keep our public safety workers safe as they go out and serve the community. We ask that you, we want to thank you for the other workers, our civil workers that come in and they work very hard every day, putting the Lord's first. Lord, we continue to ask that you bless us with a sound mind to help us make sound decisions for the city. And we ask all these things in your highest, most holy name. Amen.
Amen. The next agenda item is the roll call of members and determination of quorum. We have eight councilors present. We'd like to do a roll call, starting with...
Aye.
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 Thank you.
We have eight councilors. Copies of their agenda. This meeting has been properly noticed in accordance with the Indiana Open Door Law. Copies of their agenda are located in the back of the meeting room. Also, for any citizen wishing to speak under citizens' comments later in their agenda, please sign in using the signing sheet located in the back of the meeting room. The next agenda item are council members and special recognitions or resolutions. Do council members have any comments, special recognitions, or resolutions this evening?
Madam President?
Yes. Counselor Freeman?
I have one. And this would be the back-to-school packs that were done by the administration. I would like to say kudos to the administration for that. The kids were very appreciative when they received those backpacks and hot dogs and potato chips and still cones, so I appreciate that.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Madam President, I have a couple things. I've been contacted by a few of my constituents. I told them I would bring this to council tonight. Ms. Harris lives in Bay Ridge neighborhood. She said that the streets are concrete and crumbling terribly. The potholes are filled with asphalt, making the roads a mess. She is requesting repaving with asphalt specifically, especially along the main artery, which is Pennycroft Road. Another constituent, Ms. Lawrence, she lives in Admiral's Landing. She is also requesting repaving of the roads in her neighborhood, specifically Misty Drive. She said the asphalt is awful, crumbling at the edges, and lumpy-bumpy, patched potholes everywhere. So I have two constituents reaching out about paving. My third comment, we are all aware of the vacant marsh that is on Fox Road. I have a constituent that lives behind Amy Beverland, not Winsong, but the next one over. It's Winsong, sorry. Ms. Terry, she and I have been in contact over various things this year. She has reached out to the new owner of the old marsh building and has let him know of the dumping of trash, of the vandalism and everything that's going on. She sent pictures, and he's responded. He's thankful that somebody's keeping an eye out. There's a couple of vehicles that are expired licenses and sitting there, flat tires and everything. So he said that construction is supposed to start soon, and he said that he was going to start the towing process today for those abandoned vehicles. I drove by there about 1:30 today. They were still there. They had not been towed, but he hopes, and we are all hoping, that with the promise of construction beginning soon for the new family entertainment center in that building, that this is going to cut down on all the graffiti and the vandalism. So just a heads up on that.
Okay. Thank you, Counselor. Anyone else?
Madam President, if I may. Last meeting, I had inquired about the people that, lobbyists, that do the lobbying, and I still have not gotten a complete what I feel to be a, what exactly they have accomplished. So I will be sending a letter to all of the council people in the administration requiring a detailed analogy of what they have done and what they intend to be done. As we all know, or as I, my biggest thing for supporting the lobbyists was trying to get code enforcement away from Indianapolis and to us. So hopefully, that is on the agenda. So I will be sending that letter out here in a very, very few days. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Anyone else? Okay. The next agenda item is the approval of minutes for the meeting of July 17, 2024. Are there any questions or corrections to the minutes of the meeting of July 17, 2024?
I'll make a motion to approve the meeting minutes, July 17, 2024.
Thank you, Counselor Chavis. Thank you, Counselor Kramer, for seconding. Is there any further discussion? We would now proceed to a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. All those who oppose, please signify by saying nay. The votes are unanimous, so we have eight. The next agenda item is the signing of vouchers, approval of claims, and authorization of payment. Do we have a motion to approve...
Madam?
...approval of the claims and authorization of payments?
Madam President, may I ask a question?
Yes.
Okay. I was looking at the property tax distribution for the Fort Harrison reuse authority of over $3 million, and I would like some more explanation. What is that for?
Nagila.
Nagila.
Good evening, members. I would just like to maybe answer, are you looking at the...
You want me to show it?
Presentation? I didn't get a chance to look at the claims voucher, but I can definitely touch base with the accounts payable and then give you a more detailed explanation as to what that claim was for the Fort Harrison, if that's okay with you.
What was the, I'm sorry, what was the claim again? I didn't catch the whole, when you...
It's a property tax.
It was a property tax claim for 3.3 million for Fort Harrison.
That be related to the payment that we have to make?
It is a payment we have to make, but I just want to make sure that I get the full detail.
Right to tell you, right. I can just real say, I know that a couple years ago, we made a deal with the Fort Harrison reuse authority, that they made a payment. We take some of their tax bake, they make a payment to the city, and then we make a payment back to them.
It's more like a reimbursement.
Reimbursement back, yeah. They reimburse us, and then, you know, it's for general services on the fort, because remember, we provide general services on the fort, but we don't collect any of the property taxes on the fort, because it all goes to the reuse authority. So it was a way, it was an agreement to balance that out, and you can talk in more...
Just to put it in a nutshell, basically, we do receive from the state, we do receive those property taxes on their behalf, and then we have to go ahead and reimburse them. But I just want to get the correct details and send you and share that.
So this is our payment back to them, or the...
It is our payment back to them, correct.
Okay, thank you.
Then they pay us back some later.
Correct.
Okay.
We got a lot of work done, man.
Are you okay, Counselor, with that?
I am, yes.
Do we have a motion to approve?
I make the motion to approve the vouchers.
Thank you, Counselor Chavis, second. Thank you, Counselor Freeman. Is there any further discussion? We would now proceed to a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. All those opposed, say nay. Eight voted for. Thank you. The next agenda item is unfinished business, proposal number 11, 2024. Madam Clerk, would you please read the title of the proposal into the record?
Proposal number 11, 2024, An Ordinance Adopting and Enacting a Seventeenth Supplement to the Code of Ordinance of the City of Lawrence, Indiana.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. This proposal was introduced at our July 17, 2024, meeting and will be considered by the Code and Rules Committee. The council will not take any action tonight and will consider action on this proposal upon receipt of a recommendation from the Code and Rules Committee. And I would need to go back and ask if any committees have reports. Any reports? None? Okay. Thank you. The next agenda item is new business, a presentation from the Controller regarding financial matters. Mr. Humphrey Nagila from the Controller's office is here this evening. Will you please approach the podium and state your name for the record?
Good evening, council members. My name is Humphrey Nagila, and I'm the Controller for the City of Lawrence. I want to start by thanking you all for joining us today. It is my honor to present the financial status of the City of Lawrence. This presentation will provide an overview of our current financial position, including key highlights from the last six months of 2024. The financial health of our cities are critical, is a critical component of our ability to deliver essential services, support community initiatives, and invest in the long-term growth and prosperity of Lawrence. Our goal is to ensure that we manage our resources wisely, maintain fiscal discipline, and continue to build a strong and resilient financial foundation for our city. Over the past six months, we have faced some challenges and opportunities. Through careful planning and effective resource allocations, we have navigated these challenges by controlling expenditures while meeting our city needs. In today's presentation, we will present an overview of our year-to-date revenues and expenses for the below funds, General Fund, Motor Vehicle Highway Fund, Public Safety Tax Fund, and the EMS Fund. The administration also plans to return before this Common Council at the mid-month meeting to present additional appropriation requests as well as transfer requests. Your insights are invaluable as we work together to strengthen the financial foundation of our city. Thank you all for your attention and participation, and at this point, I'd like to begin with
Click in and then roll. Click in with the mouse and then roll the dial at the same time. Click and hold and then roll the dial. Right-click and see if there's a zoom option.
Just use control and plus sign, yep, there you go. And then just go down a little bit. There you go. Thank you.
You're welcome.
So before you is the budget performance report, year-to-date. Well, this is as of June 30. This just shows basically where we stand with the 2024 budget as of June 30. But before we get so much into it, I just want to give you, and this is just going to be high-level information in terms of balances, because like I mentioned, when we come back mid-month meeting, we're going to have a more detailed presentation on specific funds and line items that may have budget shortfalls. So for the purpose of this presentation today, it's just to give you all an overall view of where the city stands financially year-to-date. Some of the key things to note are, first column is adopted budget. That was the budget that was approved by the council for the 2024 budget from the General Fund. You do see budget amendments. Those are basically any carryovers from the prior year. Those could be purchase orders, blanket purchase orders, and just any other carryovers, adjustments that came from prior year. That gives you the amended budget, which includes the budget amendments, the carryovers from whatever was adopted. And then the current month transactions would be the transactions that took place for the month of June. And then you have your year-to-date encumbrances. Those are basically purchase orders. Sometimes departments will, department heads will lock in the amounts and just generate, create the purchase orders for future payments that they're going to make within the year, and those would typically show it to you as your encumbrances. Year-to-date transactions, same as current month transactions, just from January through June 30. Then the budget year-to-date transaction, that can also be the remainder of the budget, whatever is still left from the 2024 budget. Basically, for this report, we've been able to break down, under the General Fund, we've been able to break it down by departments, just to show where each department is and what percentage they've used, and how much revenue versus how much revenue we've got. And at any point, if you have any questions, you're more than welcome to interject and ask any questions regarding this report. I'm glad, I'm happy to answer those. So if you look at the first one, is the property taxes. For instance, we're looking at the revenue side. For property taxes, currently, year-to-date, we have received 18% of what we anticipated. I believe at the beginning of the year, we projected to receive 11.8 million, but we've currently received 2.1 million, and we are still anticipating for an additional 9.6 million before the end of the year, as far as property taxes are concerned. And we can go through the line items, but before we move further in, I just want to point out, these projections, the revenue projections, were projected, obviously, for the 2024 budget. They were projected last year. That was what was adopted by the council. We have since done more projections based on what we have this year, but we still don't even have all the figures correctly. And I have our financial advisor on the call today, virtually, and she can also probably speak a little bit. She's from Baker Tilly, and she can speak a little bit on some of the revenue projections and where we are currently with that. We still need more information from the state. We were anticipating that we would have gotten information by August 1st on some of those shared revenues that you see there, the local income tax, the county income tax. Still have not gotten any information from the state, and that's kind of what we are still waiting for. Now, us not knowing what they're going to give us makes it a little bit challenging in terms of revenue projections, but if, Susan, you can hear us, maybe you can speak a little bit on that.
Can you hear me, Humphrey?
Yes, we can.
Okay. Yeah, so my name's Susan Cowan. I'm a senior manager with Baker Tilly. I've been working with Humphrey on his revenue projections for the remainder of this year and for next year. So we are entering the budget phase of the year, and the budget season is really technically an 18-month look. It's can you fund your budget for the remainder of this year, plus fund what you need for next year? So we do have revenues as far as property tax, and we know local income tax for the rest of this year. Part of the, what we need to get, though, is those numbers for next year to determine exactly what we can come in and do an additional appropriation for, for the end of this year. Now, we do know from the Department of Local Government Finance that your property tax levy should grow by 4% next year. That accounts for about an additional $535,000 before any circuit breaker loss. What we do not know is local income tax. We don't know, so your lit, your public safety lit, those numbers are some of what we need to know to really figure out what you can do an additional for the end of this year and still be able to support everything sufficiently for next year.
I have some questions.
Yeah.
Hello, this is Councilman Giles. Couple quick questions. Is the budget not balanced for 2024?
So for 2024, we did, like Susan stated, we did an analysis, a revenue forecast projection, and based on our projection with what we have currently, it looks like we overprojected last year than what we expect to have at the end of this year.
So the budget we passed last year, based on the projections, the actual now in '24 is not a balanced budget?
It's not actual. Like she stated, there's some numbers that we are still waiting on, but just, we had more numbers like circuit breaker this year that we did not have last year. So we went, we was close as we could this year to what we are hoping to finish the year with, but that already came short, less than what we projected last, that was approved last year.
So, okay, so what I'm getting, so this is my, what, tenth? What is it? Ninth year on the council? And so this is the first time that I've, so I got some questions about normalcy. Is it common for us to be in the eighth month of the year and not, and only receive 18% of our, is that typical?
Property taxes, yes, because I believe the next property tax comes in December, at the end of the year, so, yeah, it is...
It is normal, okay. The next question I have is, how much is the budget off? It's not balanced. Because you're asking me for appropriate, she just said we're looking at this as an 18-month...
18-month.
Off? That's this year and next year. Typically, when we do a budget, we're only thinking about next year, not the current year, so...
Maybe I should clarify first. When I say 18 months, you know, obviously, your budget has to be approved by the Department of Local Government Finance. So they, granted, they approved your budget last year. There are things that can happen, such as circuit breaker being greater than you expected or unexpected expenses coming up during the budget year that were not, could not be known last year when the budget was approved. So the six months of this year is just basically a re-review by the DLGF to determine, can you fund what you need to for the remainder of this year before they approve the budget for next year?
Okay, so maybe you can answer this question. How short are we? How much did we overforecast?
I don't have those numbers from Mr. Nagila. We have a meeting about that Thursday to determine it exactly.
Okay, so that's the first question, and that's a huge question. Really, none of this is relevant now, if we don't know that. And then the next question is, what is the unexpected expenses that came up in '24 that we didn't know about in '23?
So just full disclosure, I just want to point out that this is an inherited budget for the new administration. There's a lot of, there's different requests, different needs, and different vision from the new budget, from the new administration that were not factored in in the previous budget. Those would be, and that's just typical with the new administration, so those would be some of the...
What is those things, though?
So for example, like, you know, right now, we are going through CBA negotiations, right? We did need, we had, we saw the need to get attorney, external attorney firms to help us with those CBA negotiations, because this is a new administration, and we have never done this before. That was not budgeted for in the 2024 budget.
I can get that.
Those are some of those, are one-off expenses. Now, to answer your original question of what is the budget shortfall, that is, like I said, mid-month, with the plan is to come before you and give you a presentation of where the shortfall is before we actually ask for the additional appropriation.
Okay.
But in order for us to be able to do that, we are still hoping to get some of these local income taxes that our financial advisor just spoken about, like the local income tax, we were anticipating to get it on from the state on August 1st, but they later revised it. I believe they've now given us a, is it a 14th or 15th?
I get that, but that also, that seems to conflict with the question I asked. Is it typical to only have received 18% of the budget on August 1st?
This is out of June.
Or June? But now we're August, you don't have any, I mean, you're still at June, right? You don't have any more revenue. You're just telling me you don't know what your future revenue, because the state haven't told you yet, right? And I'm asking, that's the first time. I've heard that before. And so I'm just asking, why don't we have 35% of our budget collected at this point? Or whatever that is, what is the typical amount that typically keeps you from not knowing? I mean, what's the typical amount you usually get so that you do know? I guess that's what we're, that's what I'm saying.
That we do know?
Like, it's, it's, what I'm struggling with is, it's August 1st, 18% of the budget's been collected, which I understand you guys can't control that, but you're telling me that you're going to ask me for additional appropriations in the middle of August for this year, and I'm trying to focus on next year, and I'm trying to figure out why is that? And then what are the substantial issues that caused us to be in this situation as far as unexpected expenses? I get the legal fees, but we haven't paid them yet. Was there a circuit breaker that came up this year? I'm trying to figure out, what is the justification, and why haven't we collected enough of our money? Maybe we should advocate to our state rep and state senator that we need more, we need our money. I don't know. That's what I'm asking.
So I just want to clarify that this report is as of June 30. We did choose June because it's right at the half of the year, half mark of the year.
Do you have more money collected?
There is money that has been collected, because they do come in in incrementals. So there is money that has been collected in July. You just saw the claim for the FHRA, the 3.3 million that just came in. Now, that's going back out to FHRA, but FHRA is going to bring us about a million from that.
Right.
So there's money that's constantly coming in, but right now, what, and that's property taxes, actually. That is the property tax, the 3.2 million. So that would easily go up there. So if maybe we ran it as of July 30...
September 1. So do you think September 1, you'd be in a better place? I mean, what is, what's Tilly? I know you only know our city, but they work with 20 cities. I mean, what's the case? Are we behind? Is this the whole state behind?
I don't think we are behind. Go ahead, Susan.
Humphrey, if I may, I just looked on the reports online that determine, that show what the actual spring disbursement was. And yes, they sometimes tend to come in through June into July to fully get them dispersed. It all has to do with when individuals make their tax payments. Yes, they're due May 10th, but not everyone makes them by May 10th. So typically, an auditor's office makes a cutoff date. At that point, they do settlement, because they have to get the settlement taxes to the individual units. So according to the online report, the City of Lawrence should have actually brought in about $6.4 million in property tax for the spring settlement total. So I'm sure that would be made up in June.
Okay, great. Thank you. That helps us know.
And just to add on that, so we are running this as of June, because that kind of gives us a good mark to do the projections. We may not have all the figures as of June, but at that point, we're going to sit down some time next week and go by what we have to be able to project on how we believe the year is going to end, and that should be a good spot, a good spot for us to be able to do. And that should be a good spot, a good spot for us to be able to do, to do the additional, see where the budget shortfall is and, and, and make the additional appropriation.
Madam President, can I say something? Does that have something to do with the appeals that the assessor's office has that's holding back some of the property taxes?
Levy appeals?
It can.
So, that's where we at so far. We don't really have control over that, but just showing you where we at in terms of what we've received as of June 30. I, I don't believe there's anything that's going to prevent us from, you know, hitting our target as far as property taxes are concerned. If that's any concern, I don't think that's a concern. I think it's just a timing issue that we are looking at right now. But because we also on a schedule, budgeting season is here. We do have to just project based on what we have, basically. That's kind of what we're doing. If you want to, Ms. Latrice, if you want to just scroll down, and you can just scroll down. We could go through any specific line items that you want to look at closely. I do believe that you all received these documents, or I could just go to the totals. But I'm more than happy to just go through any specific line item that you would like to, or any department that you'd like to focus on.
Whichever ones that are of largest concern for you.
For me right now?
Controller, yes.
Always public safety tax. And I do have that on there that we're going to look at. Right now, without, we did a preliminary revenue projection. But I think the next meeting would probably be better meeting to answer that question as opposed to try and answer it right now. Today's purpose really was just to show you where we stand here today.
But you're not telling me where I stand because you said some of these funds are, there's a budget shortfall and you don't know what that number is.
Well, so, again, just to clarify that, the reason that this came up, the budget shortfall discussion came up was just to show you that we have done preliminary revenue forecast for 2024, where we anticipate to finish 2024. And that came less than what was adopted. We don't have the specific line items yet. The plan is to bring that in the next meeting, at the next meeting and show you exactly where the budget shortfall is. Just doing an overview perspective, we're just giving, basically just to give you an idea that we've just ran the numbers preliminary without getting so much, all the details together.
I can give you a fund that I know everybody in this council knows was short, right? Was it the trash fund short? That's why we had to change? We all knew, you knew that was short because we just, we just, you.
Sanitation, you mean?
Sanitation, yeah, right. You knew that was short because they under budgeted. And I was told that you spent a year's worth of budget in six months. Is that fair? So, is there funds up here that should be red or trending towards red shortly?
Right.
That's the whole reason that I'm interested in you being here.
There would be, there would be.
What is that?
Like a fund that's, that's, that's.
What fund do you anticipate asking me for an appropriation in two weeks?
I can tell you right on top of my head, pension fund.
That's the one I'm concerned about. There we go. So, how much is in the reserves for the pension to pay out the pension fund?
Right now, it's, if it hasn't hit the negative, because we are continuing to draw from it whenever we have retirees, it's probably, probably about 50,000 negative right now.
Already? And how many anticipated retirements that we have? I see some retired, I see some guys in here that we probably owe them more than 50 grand.
And that's the challenge that we have because sometimes we don't know, like the last person that retired, we didn't even know until a week.
Have you asked their, 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 their department heads? Because I know that's what it used to be in the past.
Yeah, I mean, we try to, we try to, we all talk about it, but I mean, it's up to the individual.
Right.
To disclose whether they want to retire or not.
But you can set money aside in the reserves based on anticipation, right? We know that we got 15 people that are at the 30-year mark, right? This has been a big issue for Lawrence for quite some time.
Correct.
And so, we've talked about putting that money into a non-reverting fund to make sure that we had it.
Correct.
Just kept, the prior council chose not to do it. My fear was, the money was in the reserve because we were over 20% at the time.
Correct.
Where are we at today?
26%.
So, that means you have the money. And if we're over, if we're at 26, then it should be money in there to cover it though.
But we can't just move the money. We have to come before you.
Before you ask for a transfer. So, that's the transfer you're asking for.
And that's what we intending to do, that in the next couple of weeks. But then, that's why I say before we get into those details, I just wanted to give you.
But that would have been a nice overview on this paper to know that we're at 26%, and that's what's in the reserve. That's what we wanted to know. Because we know that these guys are going to retire and we want to honor them.
So, for this, for today's purpose, and I apologize, that's on me. And I can, I, I'm glad to present that and share with everyone. But for this purpose today, I just wanted to give, because I believe the concern, to my understanding, was the general, the general fund and the reserve specifically as a whole.
We know that the pension guys are the ones that are kind of the variable in that because we don't know if all of a sudden, it's getting towards the end of the year and all of a sudden, five or six of them guys tell you in November that we're going to have to pay out, because that's typically what happens. I'm going into the, but she asked me if we're going to, doing a budget for the next 18 months. So, one of my concerns is, is taking care of the guys that have taken care of us for 30-plus years and making sure that the money is there. And if it's not, if we don't have a grasp of where it's at, kind of where does that today? How are we going to know where it's at tomorrow? And I'm also concerned that if the reserve money was, you said it's at 26%, so I shouldn't have that concern anymore.
How, how much is that 26%?
7.2 million. So, it's the, it's the documents that you just have before you, that you just received. Unfortunately, I think I missed them in the email that I sent out. So, I just passed it out, but it should be like 7.2 million, I believe, on there right now.
You see it on this?
Yeah, it's on the right column at the bottom.
So, I understand your concerns, Councilor Giles. I think we just took a different approach and we, we have every intention to address all the concerns that you have. But if we, just in the interest of time, I didn't, I didn't personally think it would be feasible to bring all those concerns before you today. And that's why we wanted to start by showing you that we have 7.2 million.
So, this is, this is what you're considering. Okay, now, these funds together is what you're considering is the 72 million dollar reserve.
The reserve.
But how do you go pay somebody's retirement out of, out of the, out of these funds that seem to be, well, I guess the city operating fund would be the one that you could do it out of, right?
We could do it on any fund that's appropriate. As, I mean, those are just our bank accounts. That's where the money's at.
Oh, so you could just.
So, we could, yeah, we just.
Just pay somebody's retirement out of the utility operating fund?
Mm-hmm, that's correct.
Didn't know that.
Yep.
I learn something new every day.
So, that's a whole big, different conversation that we were going to have, talking about just Fund 825. I mean, we could talk, but that's a huge conversation. Like you've mentioned, we would like to request, and we've, we've started having those conversations and I believe public safety officials are also on board with that. Have an irrevocable, basically, fund where we could put money in there for just the retirees, transfer every money. But that's a whole different discussion. Again, like I said, we just wanted to take it chunk by chunk. That's the plan today. Just give you, show you where we at and then start going through the line items and the funds and show you how each fund is doing.
Could you talk about then how you raised 7.783,000 in the Cry Wolf Fund?
Cry Wolf is the, I believe, the fire, and I can get into details.
It's the alarm, it's the alarm deal.
Is the fire chief on, on?
He was, yes.
I, I am on, I am on, but it's not fire. I believe it's police.
It's the alarm.
Police. False alarms, penalties, basically. That's how we collect revenue on that.
So, what I want to know is how quickly, we didn't, we just kind of put that in effect within the last few years. When Bigsby came out, we hired that company. And so, what I'm really impressed. See there?
Yeah, Chief Bigsby.
Chief.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yeah, how long have we had this program?
Uh, so we had the fossilized reduction program. It's probably been over the last, I would say, seven to eight years maybe now.
Okay, and then, we raised, so this money, we, 738,000 is how much we've raised in that time period. I'm trying to figure out how much do we raise a year and how are we utilizing that money? Because I'm really, it's a fee money.
So, so typically, the money that we receive from the fossilized reduction program goes back to the general fund. So, I can get a better analysis of how much we get each month. I believe that goes straight through the controller's office. But I can get you that information, but yes.
And I can get that.
Wouldn't that be nice to pay the, wouldn't that be nice to pay the public safety retirements out of the fee?
I mean, I'm open to that. It, it is a good option. We can discuss that. We just haven't gotten to the option, but that does make sense.
Because tax money should really be encumbered to true city services, right? Because otherwise, if we don't need it for that, we shouldn't be taxing for it. But this is a fee. And this is a fee that we can gain our money back for decisions that councils made 15 years ago. And so, I think this is a really good possible way to, to help that. And hopefully, and if we knew what it was yearly, and maybe some of these guys that worked for Lawrence for 40 years love Lawrence so much that they might make that, maybe we could do some Bobby Bonds, Bobby Bonilla-type deals with them. I'm glad there's some sports fans that got that.
No, I mean, that's a good point that you bring and that's something that I would definitely like to review and see how that works. And maybe I'll bring it before everyone here and, 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 and then just see that. But there is definitely a need for, to set an irrevocable trust fund on the side just for.
And that might, and the council might feel more comfortable about putting funds in an irrevocable fund that comes from fees and not taxpayer dollars because that's what happened last time, right? And they were uncomfortable. So, that might be an idea.
So, what we could do probably is just give you an analysis on how much you're generating each year from the, and I can easily do that for you.
I got another fund I want to talk to you about that's also generating. It has no money in its account and I don't understand why. And this is for the fire chief. What is the Cash Chase EMS Operating Fund? And is that anything related to ambulance reimbursements that we were supposed to get from Medicaid? And I've never seen any of what those funds going and if those monies are being collected. And we paid an outside agency, I believe, to supposedly do that. Is anybody in here that can make sure that I'm correcting what I'm saying?
So, yes, I can speak on that. We do have an outside company, MedBill specifically, that does, really just does the collection and the billing on the city's, city's behalf. So, all that cash that you see on the EMS, I, we did set up a dedicated account just for that, really.
It says zero. That's the whole reason why I'm asking.
On the sheet of paper.
On the sheet here. I can't hardly see all that, so I'm working off of here. That's why I knew that there should be money in there.
Well, in the bank account.
In the bank, yeah. That's what I'm trying to figure out where it's going.
Well, it is going, so sorry, it is still combined with the city operating. They're both, it's both chase. So, but I want to look at that one more time just to see why it's showing zero, but.
But maybe we could separate that out.
Right.
And, you know, I'm trying to figure out how to use fees to potentially, you know what I mean? That's so, that's so, check that out.
That's a good point. And I will check, I will definitely check those two and then run projections just to see how much, how much revenue really we're getting in from those fees. And then, you know, we can entertain the conversations on, should that directly, instead of going to the general fund.
Another fee is MetroNet paying as well. I see the businesses being sold.
I am not familiar.
Opposed to paying some money for some of their stuff too. I could be wrong. I may be wrong. I see some people in the back looking. I could be wrong. And if I am wrong, I'm wrong. But I wanted to check on that too.
Okay, and I can do that as well.
Cell phone stuff or something, something I thought I heard one or two times.
I don't believe that we get paid. I'm not aware of that. I would have known, but I'll, I'll double check.
I could be totally wrong.
I will double check that.
I'm not 100% sure. I just saw that MetroNet sold to T-Mobile. They were a local business. We made a lot of deals. Hell, we gave them some land to put their spots up and stuff. And a year later, they sold, they got some big deal with T-Mobile. I just want to make sure that we get out whatever we owed before it becomes T-Mobile. If we're owed anything, I just want to make sure that we get it.
Okay, noted.
Like I said, I could be completely wrong. And if so, I apologize. I just.
Okay. So, Ms. Latrice, if you could just go down to the totals of the total revenue, basically, in the general funds. Just keep going down. You're good. One second, slowly. Just keep going down. Yep, a little bit up, up one more. There you go. Still down. That's still the. So, these are just different departments, basically, and the different funds of the, of the revenue. You're still on the revenue, so you could keep going down. Right, right there. So, as you can see where it says revenue totals, that was the adopted amount last year, 27.4. So far, we've received 52% of the revenue. Still projecting on receiving another 13 million, 13.1 million, basically.
That's good.
Then, the next one is just the salaries. So, that's the budget for 2024. And unless you want to discuss specifically an item, I could just, you could just scroll down to the totals real quick in the interest of time. I do want to point out something if you hold on there. So, let's look at, for example, line 431, professional services. You do see that at the end, 100% is basically saying that the amount received, amounts used is 100. We've used basically the whole amount, basically, but it's June 30. So, that's, I just, I just don't want you to get alarmed and focus on that 100% and think that that's an automatic budget shortfall, right? Because if you look at the 16.8, 16,000 right there, that's the amount that has been encumbered. Basically, those are just POs. The amount that was approved by the council was 18,000. But the department is holding 16, 16,000 of it. So, it shows that everything has been used because it's factoring in that encumbered amount. But what happens in those kind of situations is where we have one-on-one conversations with the department head and just make sure that we on target, that everything that was budgeted for has been accounted for. That's just part of the process of how we derive the additional, what needs to be, uh, request additional appropriation or not. And, and like I say, that, that is the next part of all these, the next step that we'll do before we come before you with the actual line items. So, if you just go down to the totals, please. Almost there. Right there. So, the expense totals, the budget amount for 2024 was 27.4. We have used 64%, but if you notice, there's a 3.7 million that has been encumbered year-to-date. So, that does skew that 64%. Just to give you a little perspective, that's what we are looking at very closely, that 64%. Because if we go by trajectory, there could be a chance that we may finish, we may hit the 100% before the year is over based on, because right now, we should really be around 50%. How we project this is each month, we expecting to spend 8% of the adopted budget. And so, if you do, this is the sixth month, so eight by six, that's 48. So, we should be at 50%. But then, I'm also factoring in that 3.7 million which has been encumbered. But that's, those are some of the ways that we look at and make projections based on that. See where we might, where we're looking to finish at. And then, if the, there's a variance, there's a huge significant variance, then we'll come before you. And, and that's where, how we ask for the additional appropriation. And that would be for each category, for each department.
And that, and once again, that does not account for any unplanned? Like, if we were to have four more retirements or anything like that?
Correct.
That 8% is, is your average operating?
That is just the average operating, correct. Not unplanned, but average operating. I do want to thank. Um, I do wanna thank you all for, um, approving the GEO bonds, because that did, um, help significantly free up the general fund. There were amounts that were budgeted on the debt servicing that came from the general fund, um, I don't wanna throw out numbers there, um, so I will come back and give you the exact number, but, um, we would be making, that's where we'd be making the transfer request, be able to move those from debt servicing, and, um, and put them, allocate them in other areas. Now, remember, we have to keep by ordinance, we have to maintain the 20% reserve, so that means we can only request additional appropriation, only so much additional appropriation, right? And so that's where the transfer, the transfer request also comes in to help, to boost that additional appropriation, should it come, that the additional appropriation that we need is more than what we can actually get, and maintain the 20%.
This is crazy, guys. It's just crazy to me, because so much of what happened two years ago is what's happening today. Thank God we saved that reserve, right?
Yes.
For the 20%, right?
But, but, but you're essentially saying that the maximum that, for right now, for where we are, the maximum we could take out of that cash reserve fund is 6%, as it stands today, since it's at 26%?
Correct.
So, um-
They have a similar-
Quick, quick, quick math, that's, that's not a lot of money. I mean, 6% of 7 million is not a lot of money.
Correct.
Right?
And I would-
So you're saying that for any amount that we're over that, we're gonna have to do tran- budget transfers?
Budget transfer from the debt service that was freed up by the GEO bonds.
Okay.
Because the balance, the budget wasn't balanced. So basically, it was a $6 million shortfall in the budget that you inherited, at least. But when we passed the budget, I thought I was passing a balanced budget. Right? I'm still here.
Yeah, that, yeah, cuz I mean, this, this is a, this is a, a much more positive outlook-
Yeah.
-than if we had not passed the GEO bonds.
Correct.
Absolutely.
And, um, and I don't, I'm not, I'm not trying to defend the previous administration, which I was a part of as a deputy control as well, but I just wanna point out, and, and Susan, you're more than welcome to jump in here, I think the challenge when you're making, creating any budget, and that's what my greatest challenge is, that's why, for my first year, you know, I wanna work with an advisor who's experienced, the greatest challenge is the revenue projections-
Right.
-when you're preparing the budget, cuz there's a lot of pieces that you don't know, a lot of things that are gonna happen next year.
We knew about the car leases and stuff, but-
Well, we, we didn't know, like, the circuit breakers, which for the property taxes, right? We don't get those, we didn't get those until, I believe, last month, um, we don't know the lead numbers for this year, but they were projected for last year, so, so those are-
We've never had a $6 million off projection before.
I don't know if it's six, I wouldn't say six, but-
I had to go borrow six.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry, let me clarify that, we've only spent 3 million, we only paid that, what, 3 million, um, from the GEO bond, so we do have 3 million. Now, that's not part of the general fund.
Right.
That's, um, that's for capital improvement and all that.
Right.
So we only freed up-
3 million.
We only paid about 3 million worth of-
Okay, so we're 3 million short, that's fair.
Yep.
And it's not your, it's not your fault, I'm not blaming you, I'm just trying to see, I'm trying to get a real look at where we're at, so we under, really understand that the budget was not balanced, right? Even though we thought it was, and that's why sometimes I get, every year, I get more and more cynical and critical, because everything, sometimes what I see ain't true.
Well, it's, it's, and for clarification, it's 3 million plus whatever amount you ask us for, for appropriations. I mean, it's a, it's gonna be a running total.
It is gonna be a running total, correct.
Yes.
Yep.
But we'll be okay, we raised a Q cap, we won't have that problem no more.
Hopefully, we get more taxes from that.
All right.
Um, did you have any other questions? Because we can go through each fund, I know I shared with you EMS, um, but that's basically just the gist of it, um, I thought the general fund would probably be more helpful to just discuss that in depth, but I'm happy to answer any questions that you have.
Yep.
Is the public safety tax money in the Chase City operating budget? Is that part of that number?
Yes, that's, that, that is our operating account, so yes.
Okay.
All right? Right?
Any councilors have any questions, further questions? Thank you, Mr. Magilla.
Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, appreciate you.
Next, we will have comments from the administration.
Thank you, councilors, I, um, appreciate you taking the time to hear from the administration. Just a, a few other things, uh, from the controller, um, there will be, uh, later on this week, in this month, will be budget workshops, so the controller will send that information out to you all, so in case you wanna participate in those workshops, um, we'll have the date available to you all, and have the opportunity to participate. Um, do wanna give a few updates, on the 24th, actually, let me start, tomorrow, tomorrow's National Night Out, uh, the city of Lawrence will, uh, be, um, Lawrence Police and, Lawrence Police, uh, specifically, will be going out to over 15 communities, uh, throughout the city of Lawrence, hopefully, one of your communities is part of, um, uh, part of our route, uh, will be throughout the, uh, the entire city, we'll have, uh, different convoys, so we'll be going out, so if you wanna participate, please let us know, we'll be leaving here, uh, at the government center about 4:45, uh, if you want to participate, otherwise, we'll see you in your neighborhoods and neighborhoods and communities, and, um, have opportunities to meet with our public safety officials. Uh, additionally, about public safety, on the 24th is Safety Day, so it will be on 59th Street and Lee Road, kinda like where we always had it at, uh, it'll be the 24th, I believe, is Saturday, and so hopefully, you all be able to, uh, participate in that as well. Uh, and speaking of additionally about public safety, but with, um, uh, Lawrence Fire Department, uh, early this year, the administration, um, had an agreement with, uh, Community Health Foundation to offer, uh, additional level of screening for a lot of our fire department personnel, and essentially, that, that screening does, it, it's another layer of screening where you get up to 50 different types of cancers that can be identified through blowwork and so on and so forth. Um, out of 101 first responders, 96 participated, it was 100% voluntary, and not a single one showed to have additional, uh, cancer that were detected, and so, that was really great feedback, uh, these results that we got from, uh, Community Health Network, and it's really great for our, um, Lawrence Fire Department, I'm not sure if you're aware, but firefighters, particularly retired firefighters, tend to, um, develop certain type of cancer, typically, sometimes rare cancers, uh, related to the work they do as firefighters, so, uh, this is another level of our commitment to public safety, to see if we have the best way we can, uh, provide those, uh, different levels of services to them, and, uh, we're very pleased with this, we wanna continue this partnership, and see, um, how we can continue to further build the health for our public safety officials. Uh, and with that, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Leondre. Next, we will have, um, items, comments from citizens. Be advised that we have three minutes limited. Bradford Jones. Please state your name and your address.
Yes, yes, my name's Bradford Jones, I live in the 11815 Old Orchard Drive, and I'm here to, I want to talk about the, uh, old firehouse on Oakland and Road on 6477 Oakland and Road. Uh, I've been, I grew up at that place, and I've been in there, and it's running down, you know what I mean, and somebody's not taken care of, I wanna make a museum out of it for the fire department, and, uh, oh, I'm trying to put it in a way that it, I got, it's ran down so bad that I can see windows broken, boarded up, I can see the grass is not cut around in the area, and the roof is terrible, and I'm just trying to see if I can require it somehow, and make it into a museum for the firefighters, and maybe for the union, but I can't get no headway, because I've tried this many other times, but it seems like it's getting worse and worse, and I would like to get something done to it. It's gonna take some money to do it, but if I can get some, uh, donations and stuff, I think I can get things rolling in that right direction to make it look better, and have a museum for the Lawrence and Oakland and. And there is a memorial there that is there by the flagpost that a lot of people don't know about, there's a plaque there, well, is there, so, I know about that history, there's a lot of history here, but I can't get nobody to do anything about it, and I figured, well, I come to you guys today and see what I can do about requiring this, leasing it, or buying it, or whatever it takes, to get that place looking better and nicer. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Okay, and I've been a fireman here for 35 years, so, retired, so, I have saved the city a ton of money, so I'm just trying to see if I could give back something on the Oakland and, but I need some help.
Right.
And I don't know how to do this without staying up here today, night day about it and everything. Okay, I'm not a very good talker in front of everybody, so-
We appreciate it, no, we understand exactly what you're saying.
But I've been trying, I talked to Rick a few times, I've talked to a few people, but it just seems like I'm not getting no headway, so, I thought maybe if I talked to you guys, to see, but it's just running down, and I hate to see that as, in my book, you know what I mean, and I think we can do it, and make a union haul out of it for the firefighters, too, if I can just get in, my foot in the door and get it, bring it up to code, or whatever it needs to be done.
Well, maybe we could sell it to the firefighter union.
Well, I don't know if that, yeah, yeah, but then you're talking about Indianapolis.
Okay.
Because that's local 416, so I do know that, you know what I mean, so, if you do it to them, that will be different, I'd like to see it re-reserved in Oakland and Lawrence, where in '75, when they annexed Oakland and, in '75, when Lawrence annexed that, in '75, so, see, I remember all that stuff, when Oakland and was Oakland and, and Lawrence was Lawrence, and then in '75, it's when it got annexed.
Right.
So, I'm just trying to get a little bit of, say, see what I can get done with that firehouse, instead of windows being broken, boarded up, and the grass growing out of the stuff there, it looks terrible, and the roof, I know they, we've had a lot of hell damage, I live right in that area, I've had to have my roof replaced, so, you know what I mean, I know that that roof has to be replaced, cuz it's in bad shape. Everything, okay?
All right.
Okay, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Jones.
Right, appreciate it.
Mr. Charles Green?
Good evening, uh, my name is Charles Green, I'm coming from 9353 Kingsborough Court, in 4550 Kingsborough Drive. I was here a month ago, um, and I had concerns about the blight in the neighborhood, uh, the renters versus the homeowners, who do we go to about, uh, the homes that are unoccupied, and the grass is growing tall, and it's, it looks bad. Also had a question about the repayment of our street in that area, I believe I'm in the second district, I've been trying to do my homework, so, I was concerned, cuz I've been doing my homework, I've been watching on YouTube, my councilman, Mr. Rick Wells, there was a concern, I think, uh, Ms. Christie said something about, um, there was a neighbor who had concerns about a yield sign, stop sign, and speed bumps, and you brought up the thing, well, is this, uh, one person, or is this, how many people are concerned about it? So, I have a neighborhood full of people who want repaid streets, and somebody looking to the blight, so if I need to sign a petition, have people, neighbors sign it, just tell me what I need to do, so we can get action, cuz I was concerned, like, if we don't have enough people that have concerns, then you're not gonna do anything about it, so.
Did you see me after the meeting, and I'd like to take a look at your area, I'd be happy to meet with you out there.
I mean, okay, I thank you for your time.
Great. I'll meet with you, too, you know, it's my district.
Thank you, sir.
You gotta make sure we always count Lawrence.
Joseph Plummer? Oh, okay, thank you, okay.
It used to be my district, and then it became his district when they restructured the rest of them.
Can I get a motion to adjourn?
No.
Moved.
Moved.
Uh, thank you, councilors, second, thank you.
We're outta here.
We are.